All right, I'd like to call the Little Miami Local School Board. Regular meeting for April to board, please. Mr. Ganna, roll call please. Mrs. Grace?
Here.
Mr. Seaver?
Here.
Mr. Hamlin?
Here.
Mr. Neves?
Here.
Mrs. Horvath?
Here.
All right, would you join me in the pledge of leases, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
All right, any motion to adopt agenda for tonight, please?
I'll move.
Mrs. Grace?
I'll second.
I heard Mr. Hamlin out there first. Roll call, please. Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Neves?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
All right, any motion to accept the reading of the minutes?
So moved.
Mr. Seaver?
I'll second.
Mrs. Horvath? Roll call, please. Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Neves?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
All right, next thing on the agenda tonight, under Communications and/or Visitors to the Board, Mr. Power.
Yes, thank you. I have our superintendent, Ream Martin, here to share information about the learning recovery plan that we created moving into next school year.
Since last month, I draw from mine, I think this time is giving me the whole area. Good evening. On February ninth, Governor Devine asked for communities and local school districts to create a learning loss recovery plan and to have that plan posted on websites by April first and to send OD and you a link to that website. And so we have done that. And our learning loss recovery plan basically is in two phases. We have a K five plan and we have a six twelve plan. Within those two plans, we have a during the school day plan and we have a before and after school day plan. I'm going to go through each of those segments so that you can understand the plans. I want you to know though that in S R two dollars, and I gave you in your packet, if you go to the fourth page, starting on the fourth page, you will see a comparison of S R dollars, which is the CARE Act, S R two dollars, which is the C R R S A Act, and then S R three dollars, which is the A R P Act. And you can see a comparison of those three Acts. The thing that I want you to notice, if you go over to page five, you're going to see under S R two and about the middle of the page, that S R two dollars, one of the appropriate expenditures of S R two dollars is to addressing learning or to address learning loss. But then I want you to go over to the following column under the S R R. I want you to notice that in L E A must reserve not less than twenty percent of its total R S R allocation to address learning loss through the implementation of evidence-based interventions. So I want you to know that this plan is being funded primarily through S R three dollars, where we must set across, or set aside at least twenty percent of those S R three dollars to address learning loss due to COVID nineteen and the pandemic. Our total allocation is a little over two million dollars for S R three. I will tell you that these are, they have not been allocated in our funding system yet. It's what we have been told will be our fund. So five, uh, two percent, or I'm sorry, twenty percent of that will be about five hundred and five thousand dollars. So that will be our budget for our learning loss and recovery plan.
Does that conclude your question?
So, um, the learning loss and recovery plan began in June summer school and actually it's suggested to have a summer school program. So yes, we can run our summer school program through that. It does not include it. Our summer school program that we are running this year is the same summer school program that we've run in previous years. We did look into running a more substantial summer school program and we didn't have enough interest in personnel to run that program through the summer. So the program that we designed is a school year program. Okay? So the program that we had was developed in collaboration of building administrators and student office administrators. So the K five plan, like I said, it has two components to it. It has a during the school day component and it has an after or before school component. We'll start with the during the school day component. So next year, our instructional day typically is set by transportation, to be honest. And, um, and our instructional day next year is going to be a little bit longer of an instructional day due to transportation. And so we are going to maximize that instructional time with, um, with flex grouping. So in elementary school, you always have, um, small groups. You have, um, where you address individual students, maybe four or five, six at a time, and you, you pull students together by their levels and then you teach them at that level to help them grow from where they are at the line. And, um, and we have some students, we have an intervention title person that will call, specify that they're double dipping those students. And basically what that means is if they qualify for this reading tutor, uh, they get that small group in the classroom and they get an extra small group. That's a very small percentage of our students, but we know that it works to double dip our students in that small group. And so we started thinking, you know, how can we utilize that, utilize these dollars to make that happen? So next year in grades K through five, we are looking at adding two educational specialists. You've seen that job description earlier, um, but if you go to the third page in your packet, you can see the salary structure of the education specialist. So we are looking at adding two education specialists at each building K through the five. What that education specialist will allow us to do is to take a period of time in the day where we can actually flex group our students. So let's say we take three teachers and we take two education specialists. So now we've got five adults working with three teachers who are those students. So we can take our higher achieving students and they will, we want them to receive independent growth as well. So they will have probably a little bit, not probably, they will have larger group of students in their classroom and their group and giving our lower achieving students a smaller group to work with so that we can grow and lessen that achievement gap. Um, they will work with this group of teachers and then the education specialist will move and work with this group and then they'll move and work with this group. So these flex groups will happen throughout the day at the elementary schools K through five. They'll be utilizing similar materials. At this point, it is thought that we will use something called Level Literacy Intervention. It is written by Asu and Irene, uh, which are two icons in the literacy world. And, um, and that's how the flex grouping will happen right now. We're looking at Monday through Thursday with Fridays being data collection and progress monitoring and that sort of thing so that we can regroup. They'll work in six week cycles. Um, so at the end of the six weeks, we will, we will move students to their new group based upon the data and the progress monitoring from that six week cycle. This is something that we've done in the past. We just haven't done it at this level before because we haven't had the education specialists to, to make the work. In grades six through eight, uh, they will also have two education specialists. They will work through E T P H. And, uh, in our upper grades, E T H is extra time, extra help, where students can go get, um, extra help in classes where they need it. So sixth grade, seventh grade and eighth grade will all have their extra time, extra help at a different time. So in, in all of these situations, what, what the positive is, is to get small groups of students. Well, when you, when you have the same teachers and students that you always have, it's harder to get the small group. So what these education specialists are going to be able to do for us is to decrease the class or the, the size of the groups where students are particularly struggling and needing a smaller group size. So, um, that will happen in six, seven and eight. There will be a portion of the day in six, seven and eight where E T P H isn't occurring. So what they will do at that time is take their, their RTI tier two and three students that need some extra individual help and they will schedule them with the, um, education specialist for that extra help at that particular time.
Who's scheduling?
It'll be the administrators that are doing all of the scheduling across the board. Councils will probably help as well, Bobby, but, but it's administration to, our administrators who are scheduling. In grades nine through twelve, uh, they have extra time, extra help set up. Uh, the way that they have fewer students is not all of the students have to come to extra time, extra help, it's only the students who are needing it. In nine grades, nine through twelve, what is needed, um, is a, is a credit recovery program. And so we're going to, um, pay for a product called Graduation Alliance, which is a credit recovery program. And we're going to hopefully catch our students up who are credit deficient, um, through a product, like I said, the product called Graduation Alliance. That is during the day. The before, after school plan, um, looks a little bit differently at the different grade levels as well. So to start again at the lower grades, if we, um, look at grades one through five, the framework is basically tutoring. So, uh, before school or after school, we will, um, ask for our teachers to be tutors. They would be paying thirty dollars an hour. That is our typical tutor rate. And, uh, we would like to see, to have at least, um, um, four tutors per building, four days a week. That's what we would like to see. Now again, tutoring is based upon the interest of teachers wanting to tutor. So, um, so it is based upon that. So we might have two, two tutors in one building and we can have four tutors in another building based upon interest. We can tutor before school or after school. Um, and tutors can say, I'm available before school on Monday and after school on Tuesday. That's fine. A student could participate in tutoring four days a week if needed. They could participate in tutoring one day a week if needed. Again, it's all going to be set up through administrators. The thing that's going to have to be, uh, set up or established is that the tutoring is every, you know, it's the same increment for the six week cycle. It will run on the same cycle as the flex groups in the building. So when we're looking at data, we're looking at all of the data at the same time, which will help us out with that.
Would they have the same tutor?
They'll have the same tutor in that cycle. Um, and so, yeah, so as a tutor, I may tutor four days a week, you may tutor one day a week. So you will have students that only need tutoring one day a week, or I would have students that need tutoring four days a week. Um, it could be that I have tutoring for math on Monday, Tuesday, and tutoring for literacy on Wednesday, Thursday, so then I can have two different tutors. So those types of scenarios could take place, but in general, yes, we would have the same tutoring. In grades six through twelve, we, um, are looking at a, a, what's called Project PAX. Bobby, you may remember.
I do.
Years and years ago, we had what was called Project PAX at the high school. We had it when I first came into this district. And basically what it was, was an after school framework where if I needed help in math, I could go to after school on, let's say, Tuesday and have a math person there to help me with math. Um, so we'll, we're going to look at re-implementing that, that Project PAX framework in grades six through twelve. So basically what will happen is on Monday and Wednesdays, you can get English and science help and on Tuesdays and Thursdays, you can get math and social studies help. The reason that we grouped it in that way is because math and science are our two big help nights. So we put something with that, that would, that would draw less. So math and, um, English and science and math and social studies are together. At the high school, the framework is one and a half hours after school and at the junior high, it's one hour after school. When possible, not when possible, when needed, we are offering transportation. We have, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Regina, before you move on to transportation.
Sure.
For tutors, what are the criteria for being a tutor? Are they all licensed teachers?
They're all our teachers, yes. And not only are they our teachers, they have to be licensed for teaching in that content area. So I don't want a social studies teacher being a math tutor, somebody comes in with a naked pout question and I can't answer it. So we're looking for, for certified people in the content to, to do the tutoring.
Regina, how do we identify, can you break it up into two for me? How do we identify the students that need to be in the program, younger students versus older students?
Older students, a lot of it is self-selecting.
Okay.
So, um, at the high school, they, you know, it could be a teacher saying, why don't you attend? Um, that sort of thing. In the lower grades, would we do any tutoring? Or the same thing with flex grouping, it's all based upon the data. So we have data, um, next year we have math data in our lower grades, K one as well as two through eight. So we can use our math data, uh, for math and for literacy. We also use Maltis and Penel, which is a benchmark assessment system. Um, we also have, um, um, you know, just assessment scores, teacher recommendations, things of that nature. So at the elementary grades, they create this huge spreadsheet that has all of these different data points on it that you can see in, in a sort and group the students the way that they need to group.
Got you.
Again, that's something that we've already done. In the upper grade, secondary six through eight, um, again, teacher recommendation a lot, a teacher calling a parent and saying, hey, I think your student can, can benefit from this. And, um, and so it would be, you know, a lot of self-selection and teacher recommendation.
At the upper grades, do we have a way to look at those students that during the course of the last year and three months are credit deficient and then reach out to them or their parents and say, say, hey, I just want to give you a heads up here, you know, you're three credits short of where you should be. Here's what we have to offer to help close the gap. And then we'd really highly encourage you to take advantage of it.
To be honest, Tony, we've already started that this year.
Okay.
So we have this program called Graduation Alliance and, uh, and we already have students that are going through that exact process. We've had students that were credit deficient and now they are no longer credit deficient going through that process. This is the first year we've been, um, implementing Graduation Alliance and working really well for us right now. And, um, and so we're going to continue with that product. It just fits under our learning loss recovery plan for next year.
And then when a, when a student's in Graduation Alliance, credit recovery, is that, um, self-directed or is there a Little Miami teacher that's assigned to?
Yeah.
If, if I'm retaking Geometry B, right, is there a teacher assigned to me or am I doing Geometry B online?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So we have an online facilitator. Her name is Mrs. Hamlin.
Okay.
And she works at the high school. She, um, these students come to her at different periods in the day. Some of them are with her all day depending upon the student situation. And, um, and she, um, helps facilitate that learning. Um, she motivates them, she's very encouraging and, um, and helps them through that process. A lot of times students who are in credit deficient status, um, would struggle with, with just given a program and say, here you go. So we feel like it's really important to have that person that is their cheerleader and, uh, and helping them along at every step of the way, encouraging them, telling them, you know, this is the pace that you're on. If you want to graduate by this time, you've got to speed up to the pace and, and, and she's their advocate in, in all circumstances. She is not their teacher of record. Um, they have a teacher of record through the product.
Okay.
So she communicates to the teacher of record if she feels like that, that needs to happen or if there's a lack of communication. So she is the student advocate and always.
Thank you.
Um, really quick. Um, so the kids from the elementary HR, it's based on their scores. It's not self-selection or volunteering. And you can have kids that were performing up here that showed a certain loss and kids that were performing down here that, what is the loss that would dictate needing the group?
So what we're looking at is where they, um, ranked as far as like a math assessment, when they left and where they ranked, where they, where they came. But to be honest, Diane, or where they rank now currently, but to be honest, in our flex plan, that flex grouping, every student is going to be, um, put in a group. And if I'm a student that's already excelling, then I'm going to put in a group that I can grow from where I am. And, and so every student in K through five will be, will be doing flex grouping at some point in time. So it's going to, it's going to address the entire student population. From our perspective, students, just because I'm above, um, grade level in my achievement doesn't mean that I didn't have learning loss last year. It just means that before I went into the COVID pandemic, I was above and I'm still above, but it doesn't mean that I achieved at the same level or grew at the same level while I would have if I, if the pandemic didn't happen. So every student in grades K through five will be addressed with a flex group, um, just like they are in the classroom in a small group. So our high, high achieving students are still in a, in a small group with other high achieving students so that we can say, okay, you are beating at this level, you're comprehending at this level, but we still want you to grow from that level. We, we don't care that here's where the, where the benchmarks, where the, where the grade level are. You're above them, but you still get the right to grow a year, just like every other student should grow a year.
And did you say it's six weeks?
We're doing six week cycles.
And then you digest out of it? You demonstrate that you?
Yeah, so, so we just do different progress monitoring. Um, and progress monitoring looks different at different grade levels. Uh, we do F and P progress monitoring. Again, we do some math progress monitoring. We do, um, uh, we use other, other assessments as well, but at the end of the six weeks, we'll do a progress monitoring, which will show the growth of the student. And so then if they say that this student, um, now no longer is in group B, they're in group D or whatever, whatever the grouping is. Okay. So the thing that you, we never want to do in our, when we have small groups, we don't ever want somebody to be stuck in a group level. So the, the key about small group or flexible grouping is that a student does their growth or gets the, the growth within that six week cycle and then you reassess to know that they, they can grow to a different group. And that's the key to flex grouping so that I can grow them, you know, from group to group to group at the rate that they are, they are achieving or learning.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions before I go to transportation?
And this is really, okay, to me, it looks like a very good, well-planned out.
Thank you, thank you. So transportation is kind of a wild card for us. Um, we don't know who would need transportation and we don't know, um, the exact cost of what that transportation would be because we don't know where the student's going to live. And so with transportation, we decided that if it was a barrier between somebody getting the help that they needed and, and not, then we could offer that transportation. If it's not a barrier, then we wouldn't offer the transportation. We'll have to constantly, um, monitor the cost of transportation because we know what our budget is. And so if it comes to a point to where transportation is pushing us over the budget, then we'll have to decide whether that is still an opportunity or not for us to continue transporting students after school or before school. So that, I know transportation is vague. That's really all, at this point, that's all because I don't know who needs transportation and who doesn't at this point. So we would like to offer it. We know that that was our biggest barrier in the past with tutoring. Um, but we know that it's going to cost, we just don't know how much at this point.
So it looks like in the morning, they could try.
You're right. So there are times that maybe we could put a student on a different bus. Um, however, that, you know, that's not always feasible. We're not going to put a high school student on an elementary bus probably or an elementary student on a high school bus. And so, you know, it would work out beautifully if we had a van that was just happening to be driving by this particular house, right? Um, but, you know, we just don't know that that's going to be the case. So we spoke into our transportation director, Kelly Oder. She is, um, just absolutely fabulous and, uh, and says she'll work with us in any way that she can to make this work for us. And, uh, so they are completely, or she is completely on board with the plan as well. Um, but again, without giving her names and addresses, she can't, she can't really give us the details that we're looking for until we can give her that information. We have a plan set up as to how we're going to communicate with transportation. It's going to have to be a week in advance, you know, those pieces so that they can get the transportation pieces and information out to drivers, uh, but we just don't have the cost around it.
Would, uh, would there be a way or, um, were there some discussions around asking those that need to be transported in like after school to commit to the program for a period of time? So transportation wouldn't change every day, right? Like?
That's right. So they do have to commit for the six week cycle.
Okay.
If, if they don't, I mean, we can't, you know, we can specify, but, but if they don't attend, then, then they, they don't get to continue to attend. That sounds harsh, I know, but, uh, because of transportation and really, uh, they're taking the spot from, from somebody else. So if you're showing up, you know, here and there, then, then the person that didn't get the spot really deserves that. So it's going to be a commitment that's six weeks. Um, after the six weeks, they can recommit for another six weeks or they can decide that it's not for them. Uh, but we do want people that will attend on a, on a regular basis. Other questions?
And this is.
We have S R one, right?
This is all out of S R three application again, um, S R three. We have about, uh, what, what has been determined that we're going to receive is two million five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and three dollars and eight cents. Twenty percent of that comes up to five hundred and five thousand, seven hundred dollars and sixty cents. So that is our budget.
What, what would the standard, run-of-the-mill educational specialist look like? Is that a student who's right out of college?
Really good question.
Like what, what does that, what does that, when that person walks in, what does that person look like from a, on paper?
Yeah. So what we would love to see is a certified teacher. Our educational, our educational specialist job description is a preferred teacher certificate. It's not a, it's preferred. So, um, so really, to be honest, depending upon who we get, depends upon what, what they're going to be doing in that, um, in that flex grouping. Um, we know that we're going to be creating the lessons or the ideas of what they're going to be doing in that, in that flex grouping for them because they're not going to have the planning time to create those lessons. Um, but depending upon who we get, we have, we've had something in the past that we've called, um, well, I know that L S T is, but I can't tell you right now what it stands for. That's terrible.
Learning Support Teacher.
Thank you, Learning Support Teacher. Um, and, and I will tell you, they were some of our best teachers from Little Miami who decided to stay home with their children who came back to do that. Oh my word, Tony, they were, they were incredible. If, if we could get some of those folks to, to buy into the education specialist role, it, it would be like having another, it would be having another teacher. Um, so that is preferred. Um, it's not required. We can have, the program that I'm talking about, Level Literacy Intervention, is a, is a very scripted program. So, um, somebody could be fantastic at the program by, by just, by reading the script and working with the students and not having that, that certificate. What they wouldn't bring to the table is, I see you can do this. I know the next thing that you need is this and that expertise pulled in as well as that product. Um, so it really depends on what the person brings as to where the, what could be placed as far as the flex grouping is concerned.
And each positions are one year position open?
Other questions? I appreciate your support.
Thank you, thank you, Regina.
Thank you.
So the next thing on our agenda tonight is, uh, any community comments on the agenda items. This is.
No, I'm signed up.
Next thing then would be treasures, reports and financial reports. Mr. Ganna?
Sir, under item number one, asking the board's approval of monthly, uh, four reports.
Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Mrs. Grace? Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Hamlin? Any discussion?
Included in those reports, of course, are the monthly background association, individual fund balance listing report and two different budgetary reports and a revenue report off of the general fund. Month ending, uh, March reports.
Roll call, please. Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Neves?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Under item two, asking for the board's approval of the contracts as listed.
Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Mrs. Horvath? Second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Grace? Uh, Terry, you want to give us a little bit of background here?
Yes, we have three contracts listed under there on the first one, applied for annual services and that's for special education services for a student. The second one is managed financial. That's actually the financial company that's providing the lease for leasing computers. And this is a lease actually approved by the board back in April of nineteen. Um, and these were the additional units we were still waiting on to get for this lease. This is about nine hundred additional laptops. Um, so that's a computer lease. And then the last one, um, which was also this, uh, what the company's required.
So have they told us when those other computers are going to come in?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I would send a new chance until they were here.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yeah, this, that's why we're waiting so long to amend this lease to add to it. Originally we had twelve hundred and fifty devices, this one got nine hundred.
All right, roll call, please. Mr. Neves?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Next thing on our agenda tonight is superintendents' reports and recommendations. Mr. Power.
Yes, thank you. I'd ask the board's approval for all personnel items listed under number one.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mr. Seaver?
Second.
I'll second.
Mr. Hamlin? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Neves?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd ask the board's approval for number two, approval of a supplemental for high school media, our district media, uh, department chair.
I'll move.
Mrs. Grace?
I'll second.
Mrs. Horvath? Roll call, please. Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
I'll second.
Second? Mr. Neves?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, I'd ask the board's approval for, uh, the updated board policies listed under item number three on the agenda.
Are these first reading or second?
Let's see, this is second.
Second reading?
Yeah. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Hamlin?
Second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Grace? Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Neves?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, it's my pleasure to recommend to the board item number four, to, you're asking for your approval, the class of 2021 graduates, 268 graduates scheduled for another standard on Sunday, May the 23rd at 6:00.
Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Mrs. Grace?
I'll second.
Mrs. Horvath? Roll call, please. Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Neves?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations, graduates, class of 2021, right?
Yes, awesome. And then lastly, item number five, I'd ask the board's approval for the stacking plans towards the learning recovery plan for the 2021-22 school year.
Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
I got Mr. Hanlon and Mr. Seaver. I encourage you to do that second. Thank you. Second by Mr. Seaver. Any further discussion on the plan tonight? Roll call, please. Mr. Neves?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Next thing on our agenda is new business. So the first thing under new business is our Warren County Career Center report. Mrs. Grace?
Yes. We recognized Warren County Career Center's springboard project lead, the way instructor Roy Broderick, for being selected as a nominee for Ohio ACTE Teacher of the Year Award, and the Learning Lab Preschool Director, Warren Allen, for earning, again, the Ohio Five Star Stack Up to Quality Preschool Designation. And that really is not an easy thing to do. We approved agreements for waste management. We became the MSSC Master Training Center for Ohio. People that have to go, and don't ask me what that is, because I can't remember. It's a training site for manufacturing skills standards, and there's not one in Ohio, and all these people had to go to Indiana to get their training. So now the first center is the only one in Ohio that will provide that training. So that's a good thing. We approved our student, adult student handbook and our high school student fees. We got donations from, of Beatrice Staten, $100,000 from Franklin B. Walter Award for Cosmetology, and Salem Maro Fire Department, which is ours, one of ours. They donated fire equipment, which is very expensive, and it really helps us out. We have OSB Legislative Liaison, Esther Larson. She reports on anything that's going on in the legislature and gives us an update. Also, Lisa Bad from Springborough, she reports on students, and we had 28 Warren County Career Center students in Business Professional Association, advanced to national competition. Also, our senior cosmetology, Roberta Orval, was selected for the Franklin B. Walter Award. And Morgan Sedwich took first place at the Ohio Education Rising in Public Speaking, which at high school, that's really quite an honor, because I remember when I was in high school, I got sick of my stomach when I had front of a group. We also had Lead the Way Senior Grace Burnett, accepted at Purdue University, which is quite an honor. Also, our superintendent, Rick Smith, reported on enrollment of high school and adult programs. And we are going to have a new main campus director, Gary Patton, who has been there for years and years and years, is retiring, so we're looking for a new person. And that's all I have. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you. Next thing would be a board report on student achievement. Mrs. Horvath?
On April 21st, current active National Honor Society members conducted a belated tapping ceremony for senior NHS inductees. These students received a NHS graduation stole tassel and rubber duck for their induction. Congratulations to all senior inductees. A poll list can be seen at littlemiamyschools.com. And then hopeful junior members will be tapped tomorrow during third period. Little Miami Local Schools is proud to announce that the Little Miami Academic Team has won the OAC Regional Championship. They defeated Goshen, Sikimore, Mason, and Walnut Hills to win the title. So they've now won 2017, 2018, 2019, and 2021. And the only reason they didn't last year is because of COVID. And they're hosting an undefeated season with a 25-0 record. Congratulate Saturday starters that brought home the title once again. Gavin Kleesh is the captain, Jake Sheppman, Sebastian Blast, Sidney Davidson, David Smith, Dakota Baldwin, Ethan Durachi, and Luke Horn. And then on April 14th, a little Miami senior signed letters of intent to take their academics and athletics to the next level. We're very proud to watch these eight young people blossom into young adults and college athletes next year. Little Miami celebrates with each of you and your families as you take this journey. We will be cheering you on back home. So Austin Center is playing basketball at Belafonte University, Caleb Curlis Soccer at Manchester University, Ali Gray Basketball at Marietta College, Alex Hobbs Wrestling at Ohio Northern, Riley Pringle Football at Ashland University, Keegan Reese Soccer at Capella University, Brooke Smith Football at Robash College, and Reese Stockdale Football at The Ohio State. Wow. And then the last thing, congratulations are long overdue for the Little Miami Junior High Power of the Pen Writing Team. A few select student writers are headed to the state level writing tournament on May 15th. We're very proud of their writing skills and want to celebrate their creativity. Eight Little Miami Junior High students qualified for and competed at the regional tournament on February 27th. After their spectacular performance at regionals, two writers, eighth grades Riley Angel and Isabella Gardner, have qualified for and advanced to the state meet on May 15th. Congratulations to all.
Why do they get a membership?
They're playing on a double, they're on a double, and then.
Oh, okay. I wondered.
Thank you, Mrs. Horvath. The next thing tonight is our legislative, legislative update. So, Mr. Seaver, you have updates on it?
Our school board has all recently been school boys and girls too. We attended the IBSA School Board Association Institute of Training. We've covered two days of various different topics. I'll just comment on the legislative part of it. Hospital Number One, the fair school funding, as we all know, provides for a fair public method of funding the schools, which primarily now rely on property taxes. Senate Bill Number 110 is the budget bill. It advocates and allocates where the money goes. Most of the time, or some of the time, it goes for vouchers. Vouchers for Ohio. The history of vouchers shows the history of lack of regulation. It's cost taxpayers of Ohio billions of dollars in the form of ECON. Vouchers take money out of local schools, and they shift that to the private schools. The budget proposals this year actually increased the vouchers exponentially while holding the local and school districts throughout Ohio frozen at the 2019 level. Private schools generally don't perform as well as our public schools do, so vouchers hurt Ohio. There is some litigation being considered over the voucher program. I don't know where that'll go, but they're asking the schools all throughout Ohio to consider this. The budget is currently being put together. As you know, it's a biannual, a two-year budget. Probably take them to June to get that done. So know the issues, know the decision-makers, know their calendar, and contact your representatives. Pandemic has proven the value of public schools. There's no question about that. So support your public schools. Today and every day is a great day to be a panther. Thank you.
And then we're worried that we're going to lose a senator or representative for a legacy seat. I just read that.
Yeah, I think with the census, Ohio's going to lose one, one representative in the US House of Representatives. And one like Oral.
Next thing under, on the agenda is the next board meeting, so our next scheduled board meeting in regular session will be Tuesday, May the 25th, at 7:00 PM here in the meeting room.